You are not a God in need of anything we can give, by your plan, that's just the way it is. You are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God alone, not tomorrow and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose power none can contend. You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God alone, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. Oh you are God alone from before time began, you were on your throne. You are God, and right now, in the good times and bad, you were on your throne. You are God, oh you're the only God whose power, hallelujah! You're the only God whose name and praise will never end. You're the only God who's worthy of everything we can give. You are God, and that's just the way it is. You are God alone, from before time began, you were on your throne. Brother Sam Parker, you are God alone, and right now, in the good times and bad. You were on your throne, you are God. Sing it one more time, you are God alone. And you are God alone, from before time began, you were on your throne. You were God alone, and right... You were on your throne, you are God alone.
Amen. That's all about our heads tonight. Precious, wonderful Savior, what a privilege it is to come into this presence tonight. Lord, Your Word is still so true, all these years later, where two or three would be gathered, You promised You'd be in the midst, Lord, and anyone with the smallest amount of spiritual discernment can tell that just now, Lord, and as You're here tonight, as Your prophet always told us, always, only coming, good things could happen, Lord, and we have desires, we have needs, Lord, there's each one of us here tonight, might need a touch of healing, might need a, Lord, something in our heart to draw nearer, Lord, whatever it might be, but we've learned that You're the specialist on the job, and, Lord, any need that would be here, we lift that to You just now. We would come tonight with an expectation, Lord God, not just to come to an appointment or something to do, but, Lord, to be gathered together, we're the place of Your provided worship, Lord, and, Lord, to learn more about You, to be drawn closer to You. And as Your Word will come forth tonight, Lord God, let there not be one resenting spirit, let there not be one critical spirit, let there not be one thing that can hinder the flow of Your Holy Spirit, Lord, but let it move through a room in such a way, Lord, like we've not yet seen before, and let Your Word take complete control, Lord, and continue to change us, Lord, from glory to glory, as Your rapture process has begun, let it be here tonight. Bless Your people in a very special way, Lord, in the lovely name of Jesus Christ. Amen. 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 Thank you, Lord. Appreciate it.
I'm a little bit nervous, so you just talk with the mic off. Hallelujah anyhow. Somebody say hallelujah anyhow. How many real tired from the trip? Just turn to your neighbor, tell him, "Wake up. It's time to praise the Lord." Hallelujah! We can give them a better hand clap of praise than that this evening. Hallelujah! Welcome home, church. Praise the Lord, the name of the Lord, hallelujah!
Oh, the name of the Lord is a strong tower, where the righteous run into, and they are saved. The name of the Lord is a strong tower, the righteous run into, and they are saved. Somebody say, "Blessed be the name, blessed be the name of the Lord, blessed be the name of the Lord, blessed be the name of the Lord, most high." Oh, blessed be the name of our Lord, blessed be the name of the Lord, blessed be the name of the Lord, most high. The name of the Lord is a strong tower, the righteous run into, and they are saved. The name of the Lord is a strong tower, the righteous run into, and they are saved. Somebody give Him glory, glory to the name of the Lord. Glory to the name of the Lord, most high. Oh, glory to the name of the Lord, glory to the name of the Lord, glory to the name of the Lord, most high. The name of the Lord is my strong tower, hallelujah! The righteous run into, and they are saved. The name of the Lord is a strong tower, the righteous run into, and they are saved. Oh, holy is the name of my Lord, holy is the name of the Lord, holy is the name of the Lord, most high. Holy is the name of the Lord, holy is the name of the Lord, holy is the name of the Lord, most high. Somebody say, "Blessed be the name of the Lord." Praise God! I'm so glad, church, that I've been changed. Are you glad you've been changed, brother William? Well, praise the Lord. Well, I've been to the water, and I've been baptized, I've been washed in the blood of the land, I've been changed from the creature that I was, and redeemed now my name, 'cause I've been changed, I've been reborn, all my life has been rearranged. What a difference it makes when our Lord has His way, all my life, praise God, has been changed. All my sins, they were scarlet, they are white. I was bound, but tonight, I'm free. I was lost in the darkness, but now I'm found, I was blind, oh, now I see. Oh, I've been changed, I've been reborn, all my life has been rearranged. What a difference it makes when my Lord has His way, all my life, praise God, has been changed. When at last, in His presence, I'll stand above, He'll wipe every tear from my eyes. Oh, I thank Him for giving a wretch like me, a new home beyond the sky. Oh, I've been changed, I've been reborn, all my life has been rearranged. What a difference it makes when the Lord has His way, all my... Sing that last verse, my brother. ...changed. When at last, in His presence, I'll stand, oh, He'll wipe every tear from my eyes. Oh, I thank Him for giving a wretch like me, a new home beyond the sky. Oh, I've been changed, I've been reborn, all my life has been rearranged. What a difference it makes when our Lord has His... Oh, my life, praise God, has been changed. Oh, praise Him if He's changed your life. Hallelujah! Would you be free of that burden this evening? That burden of sin? Somebody say, "There's power in the blood." Say it again, "There's power in the blood," hallelujah! Would you be free of that burden of sin? There's power in this blood, power in the blood. Would you, oh, evil, a victor, when there's wonderful power in the blood? Somebody say, "Power!" It's wonder-working in the blood of the land. There is power, power, wonder-working, in the precious blood of the land. Oh, would you be free, that passion and pride? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Come for a cleansing, two calories' time, there's wonderful power in the blood. Oh, there is power, it's wonder-working, pop, in the blood of the land. There is power, power, wonder-working, pop, blood of the land. Would you be wider, much wider than snow? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Since days are lost in its life-giving flow, there's wonderful power in this blood. There is power, it's wonder-working, pop, in the blood of the land. There is power, power, wonder-working, in the precious blood of the land. Would you do service for Jesus, your King? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Would you live daily His praises to sing? There's wonderful power in this blood. There is power, power, wonder-working, in the blood of the land. There is power, power, wonder-working, in the precious blood of the land. Hallelujah! Praise the Lord, there's still power in the blood. Hallelujah, you can have a seat this wonderful evening, on behalf of the little home church here, God bless you and welcome. Good to see all your wonderful faces. Good news is, we replaced the air conditioner. I remember last time it got a little hot, so we said, "That can't happen again." So brother Manuel laid down the hammer, said, "Get it done." Lord bless all those involved, to, hope, Lord willing, keep us nice and cool while we just praise the Lord, so God bless you. Any prayer requests and song specials that we'd have this evening, or for the evenings going forward, we just have a little desk out there, you can write it there, there's a piece of paper and a pen, and you could just put your specials down there, and you can sing to the Lord. I guess everybody was a little shy for tonight, we don't have any specials, but God is good. Hallelujah! Somebody say, "All the time." And all the time, my God is good, praise God. So no prayer requests this evening, or song specials, but we'll just praise the Lord anyhow. Amen? That's right. So brother Ronnie, would you just... Where's my brother Ronnie? Yes, brother Ronnie, would you just take us to the Lord in prayer? Usually we'd pray over the prayer request, but if you've got something on your heart, you can talk to the Lord directly this evening, so if we just all stand in reverence to our Lord, we'll take the evening offering and tithing as well. So if our brother would come on up.
Let's just bow our heads tonight, amen. Father, we love you, Lord, we thank you for your grace to us, Lord, that you brought us here safely, Father, and, Lord, we're all gathered together for one purpose, Father. Lord, it's good to see one another and to shake hands, but, Lord, most of all, we want to visit with you tonight, Father. Lord, we just ask that you would just have the preeminence in the meeting tonight, Lord, that you would just move amongst your people, Father. Lord, that you would be high and lifted up in this place, Lord. Father, as we've come in off the road and weary, and, Father, maybe different things on our minds, and different situations that we're dealing with, Father, but, Lord, you're the God of every situation, Lord, and we just ask that you would go to work tonight, Lord, and, Father, may you just bring peace, Father, amongst your people tonight, Lord, just ease our minds, Father, that we could realize that we've arrived at a safe sanctuary tonight, Lord, or we could, Father, just lay aside our worries and our fears, and, Lord, we could just draw from you, Lord, and, Father, our brother Dale mentioned a sister in his church, Sister Judy, Lord, a warrior, a saint, Lord, that stood for your word, Father, she's not doing well, Lord, in the hospital now, we just ask that you would just be with her, Father, that you would just go to where she's at, Lord, that you would, Lord, let your healing angel just touch her now, Father, Lord, that you restore her health, Father. Lord, whatever it is that is ailing her body, Lord, you're the God that can take care of it tonight, Father. Lord, for the unspoken requests, Lord, Father, maybe there's questions on the hearts of the believer, Lord, that have come to this meeting, Father, that, Lord, they know there's a fountain open in this house tonight, Lord, and they have situations, Lord, they have questions that need answers, but, Lord, you are the answer tonight, Lord, and your word is what we have need of, Father, and, Lord, we just ask that you would give your word preeminence, Lord. Father, we believe your word is still the word of Hebrews 4:12, Lord, that, Father, you know exactly what we need, and you can, Father, just turn that servant of God, Lord, and minister directly to the need at hand, Father. Lord, we just give you all that we are, Father. Lord, we give you our worship tonight, Lord, for you're worthy of every song, every breath we could give, Father. Lord, may you just continue to move amongst us, we thank you for your presence, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ.
Oh, why would I worry, the giants come calling my name? My God is so much bigger than troubles I face. Why would I hunger for power, or riches, or fame? 'Cause my God is so much better than all of these things. Why would you be shaking this evening? So I won't be shaken, I won't be moved. My God is faithful, His promises true. I speak to the mountain, oh, it's time to move. 'Cause my God is bigger, better, stronger, greater than you. My enemies scatter, oh, they know the battle is done. My God is stronger than victory already won. You died for my ransom, and rose up on the third day. 'Cause my God is greater than... So I won't be shaken, I won't be moved. My God is faithful, His promises true. I'll speak to the mountain... Somebody tell it, it's time to move. My God is bigger, better, stronger, He's greater than you. There's no mountain too, no valley too, there's no fear that I have, He doesn't already know. There's no problem to be, there's no weapon too strong, there is nothing more, God, that's impossible. There's no mountain too high, no valley too, there's no fear that I have, He doesn't already know. There's no problem to be, there's no weapon too strong, there is nothing more, God, that's So I won't be shaken, I won't be moved. My God is faithful, His promises true. I'll speak to the mountain, oh, it's time to move. My God is bigger, better, stronger, He's greater than you. My God is bigger, better, stronger... Sing it one more time, "I Won't Be Shaken This Evening," hallelujah! So I won't be shaken, I won't be moved. My God is faithful, his promises true. I'll speak to the mountain, oh, it's time to move. Cause my God is bigger, better, stronger, he's greater than you. He's bigger, better, stronger, greater. He's bigger, better, stronger, he's greater. He's bigger, better, stronger, greater. He's bigger, better, stronger, and greater than you. He's bigger and better and stronger. But most of all, he's here this evening, amen? So let's sing that song. Your presence is heaven, Lord, to me, hallelujah. Your presence is heaven to me. We'll get that up there and praise the Lord, hallelujah. Still doing good? Still love the Lord? Hallelujah! Praise the Lord. Who is like you, Lord, in all this earth? Hallelujah! Who is like you, Lord, in all the earth? Matchless love and beauty endless world. Nothing in this world can satisfy. Jesus, you're the cup that won't run dry. Your presence is heaven to me. Your presence is heaven to me. Treasure of my heart and love my soul. In my weakness you are merciful. Redeemer of my past and present wrong. Oh, to all my future days to come. Just close your eyes and praise him. Your presence is heaven to me. Your presence is heaven to me. All my days on earth I will away. Think about it. The moment that I see you face to face. Nothing in this world can satisfy. Cause Jesus, you're the cup that won't run dry. Your presence is heaven to me. Your presence is... All my days were planned to me. All my days on earth I will away. The moment that I see you face to face. Nothing in this world can satisfy. Oh, Jesus, you're the cup that won't run dry. Your presence is heaven to me. Your presence is heaven to me. Oh, falling in love with Jesus. Falling in love with Jesus. Falling in love with Jee... How many can say? It's the best thing I've ever done. In his arms I feel protected. In his arm, I'm never disconnected. In his arm, I feel protected. There's no place I'd rather be. I'm falling in love with Jesus. Falling in love with Jesus. Falling in love with Jesus. Is the best thing I've ever done. In his arms I feel protected. In his arm, never disconnected. In his arm, I feel protected. There's no place I'd rather be. Oh, there's no place I'd rather be. Hallelujah! How many came for something from the Lord tonight? Praise God, let's sing that little chorus, just fill my cup, Lord. If we're true and honest, Lord, I just want you to fill me this evening, hallelujah. Fill my cup, Lord. My cup, Lord, I lift it up, Lord. Come and quench this thirsting of my soul. Bread of heaven, feed me till I want no more. Here's my cup, fill it up, and make me whole. Just fill my cup, Lord, I lift it... ...this thirsting of my soul. Bread of heaven, feed me till I want no more. Here's my cup, fill it up, Lord, make me whole. One more time. Oh, fill my cup, Lord, I lift it up, Lord. Come and quench this thirsting of my soul. Yes, Lord! Bread of heaven, feed me till I want no more. Here's my cup, fill it up, and make me whole. Let's give the Lord a hand clap of praise and somebody shout the victory tonight. Can somebody say "hallelujah"? Wonderful. You may be seated just for a short moment, I have you standing, but it's good to stretch the legs out. How many can say "God is good"?
God is good!
My goodness, I look out just, good friends and family. Wait, that's your cue? Good friends and family. Oh goodness, I don't even know what to say, I chewed off my last nail. I didn't drop the hammer on the AC, by the way. But we needed AC, right? Those of you remember, we've tortured you guys long enough, we made you stand up long enough. But you're family. Every one of you's family, you know that when you come out here, it's not off the, right on the path. It's not on I-40, it's not on I-10. You gotta come up and out of your way to get here. So I know that you're excited to be here, I know that you want to be here. So somebody say "boo devil!" Amen. I don't even have like the year anniversary meetings or whatever that is, but it's special anniversary meetings. Amaril snuck in on me, they're getting really good at that. Brother Ronnie snuck in on me. I didn't think he was that good, but old Wayne's teaching him good out there, so... Yeah, he got me too, but you know what? We certainly appreciate all of you guys coming. Every one of you, look at these ministers up here. You guys ready to pull this young guy to shreds? This evening, we got our Brother Isaac Hatfield from Ohio and Bluffton, Ohio. And of course, you know his wife, Sister Bethany. She was gonna be here this evening, but I guess she had fallen and got a concussion. So keep her in your prayer, Brother said she's doing better. And they got a young son named Spencer, so... This young man, he's just been a blessing, we heard him preach up at Brother Dale's place. And we got to know him and just someone said, "You know what? Call that brother and see if he had come out here and opened up these meetings." And that's just what we're gonna do. So he'll be opening up the meetings here this Thursday evening. And then, so that our Brother Doug Baker wouldn't be so nervous for the whole meeting, all the way to Sunday. That way I get to actually enjoy him for a couple of days. We had him to preach tomorrow night. So he's gonna preach Friday night. And then Brother Joe Adams from Louisiana's gonna preach Saturday. Hallelujah, good brother. And then we got the big, big eagle. Brother Richard Douglas. On Sunday, man, we love you, buddy. God bless you, sis, we're glad you came too, and North Carolina's in the house. So we're excited about that. And we're just excited, you know, we're just regular homeboys, so... You know, none of you have to be uptight. You don't have to be upset. You can relax, you can enjoy. And if you need anything at all, we have a Father who has everything. So all you gotta do is ask, amen? So that being said, we got so many ministers here, I'm not going to announce them until Saturday. I'm gonna go ahead and Saturday, before we start the service, we're gonna have him just stand up and mention who they are, where they're from. And their wives included. Sister Joanna, you'll have to, you'll have to be mentioned in that, so... And I'm gonna do it, I guess not because I've been told not to do it. Oh, you're the guy who had all the ministers stand up and announce themselves, and you know, I just want you to know who's preaching around you. Right? I'm gonna give the ministers respect too. Don't you want to know? So it's not like we're just, I don't know, anyway. Brother Doug, you know how we get in trouble, I'm gonna get in trouble. And I'm gonna get in trouble, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna pick my trouble. I'm gonna get in trouble, but this year I'm gonna pick it. So anyway, we're blessed to have you here. We love you all, and that being said, I believe that the church here got you all shirts, I hope that there's one for you. We can't figure out everybody, but we tried. But there's gonna be, for those of you that snuck in, we're gonna try to get some shirts for you. And I guess Saturday will be like Shirt Day? I'm trying, Brother Caldwell, I'm trying to find a name for it. What do you think, Brother William? Free Day? And so you don't have to wear, I won't have to wear a tie, you won't have to wear a tie. If you don't want to, if you have to actually dress up, dress up. Don't let it stop you. But if not, wear your shirt. Brother Joe's preaching on that day, he said it don't bother him at all. He just said, "Can I wear it too?" He said, "Brother, you can do whatever you want, you're the preacher. You're gonna be preaching." So yeah, so Saturday will be the Shirt Day if you want to. If you don't want to, well then, when you don't wear it, we're all gonna say, "Look at that guy, he didn't want to wear it." No, I'm kidding. Anyway, let's stand to our feet. Amen, so as we call our Brother Isaac up this evening, we have extra space here for any minister wants to save a seat for, or give a seat to anybody, you're welcome to sit up here. So let's just sing that song, "Fill My Cup," as we call our Brother Isaac. How many gonna be pulling tonight? I pray, just pull, this brother has a gift. And you know, we just want the Lord to have his way, so just be pulling it. Let's just pull everything out that we can, amen? Let's just get that blessing tonight, and let's glorify our Lord Jesus Christ, amen? Oh, fill my cup, Lord, I lift it up, Lord. Come and quench this thirsting of my soul. Bread of heaven, feed me till I want no more. Here's my cup, fill me, and make me whole. All, sing it one more time. Oh, fill my cup, Lord, I lift it up, Lord. Come and quench this thirsting of my soul. Bread of heaven, feed me... Bread of heaven, feed me till I want no more Here's my cup, fill it up, and make me whole
Amen, is that your prayer tonight? Amen, do you have room for the Lord to come in And fill up all those little areas that you know the world takes out of us sometimes? And we come in a little empty, but I believe He's here to fill every desire, Amen, that you have in your heart this evening and this weekend. And we're just under expectation for what the Lord has in store. We're just consider it such an honor to be here before you this evening. We appreciate Brother Manuel so much, a real friend and for having us to come. We're just so honored and we bring greetings from Brother Wayne Lawson there, Back at home and in the family, Brother Ray Erickson. We were sad that my family couldn't come, but next time, Lord willing. But we're just happy to be in the house of the Lord. Amen, and we just thank the musicians, what a powerful song service, amen, To come out and fill the atmosphere of the children of God. Amen, worshiping the true and living God. Amen, we've got a lot to be happy for. Amen, Brother Brandon, I just listening, studying the other day And he's talking about, he's opening a meeting there in Yakimaan. He's preaching about how just the night before, They had had an election of sorts where the different Democrats and Republicans Were electing their representatives and they said they build a platform, amen, For I think it was Kennedy and Nixon and they built a platform And then they would elect them and everyone would cheer and rejoice that they elected their man. And I like what he said, but he said, now we've come here tonight to elect a man And that man is the Lord Jesus. And he said, I'm trying to build a platform for Him tonight That in the coming nights of this campaign, That we might rejoice and praise His name because that we have elected Him in our hearts To be our Savior, our God, our healer. And first, we want to place a platform for Him. Amen, that's our desire tonight, amen, to build a platform for the other ministers coming, But most importantly, to build a platform for the Lord Jesus. Amen, to come into the meeting because He's the only one amongst us that can bring change. Amen, that can minister to the need of the heart. Amen, so maybe you have a need this weekend, we'll just go to the Lord in prayer. And Brother Wayne has told me before, going to preach a meeting, Don't see it as a pressure, see it as an opportunity. And I like to say that to you as individuals as well. Amen, sometimes the devil will try to make face such a pressure. Amen, but don't see it as a pressure, see it as an opportunity this weekend. Amen, to come into the presence of one that can change any situation. Amen, let's just bow our heads. Heavenly Father, Lord, we feel Your presence in this place. Lord, we know that You're here, Father. Lord, not just because we feel You, but because You promised it in Your word. And Lord, Your word is still a deserner of the thoughts and intents of the heart, Father. We've not gathered here together just to hear from a man, Lord. We've gathered together to hear from You, Lord Jesus. Knowing, Lord, that just a word from You, Father, Lord could loose a captive heart, Lord. Just a touch from You could deliver a bound soul, Lord Jesus. And no doubt, there's needs all across this building, Father. Lord, I don't know them, but You do, Lord. And I pray that You just help us, Lord speaker and here alike, To get out of the way, Father, that Your presence might come down and move amongst us. And all that said and done, we'll be sure to give You the glory and the honor In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen and amen. If you have your bibles this evening, we'd like to turn straight to the word And we're gonna, amen, turn to the book of Exodus, chapter 10. And we'll read a couple of places here. Amen, I see so many familiar faces, it's just good to see everybody. Some we know, some we don't know. And Brother Ronnie surprised me as well. I didn't know he was gonna be here. I walked in the hotel and there he was. So a little piece of home here tonight makes me feel good. So just, I just love the body of Christ, amen. Exodus 10:1 and then we'll go to Exodus 14 and then Numbers 13. It says in Exodus 10 verses 24 to 27, And Pharaoh called unto Moses and said, go ye, serve the Lord; Only let your flocks and your herds be stayed; Let your little ones also go with you. And Moses said, thou must give us also sacrifices and burnt offerings, That we may sacrifice unto the Lord our God; Our cattle also shall go with us; There shall not be a hoof be left behind; For thereof must we take to serve the Lord our God; And we know not with what we must serve the Lord, Until we come thither. But the Lord hardened Pharaoh's heart, and he would not let them go. Exodus 14, starting in verse 11. It says, and they said unto Moses, because there were no graves in Egypt, Hast thou taken us away to die in the wilderness? Wherefore hast thou dwelt thus with us, to carry us forth out of Egypt? Is this not the word that we did tell thee in Egypt, saying, Let us alone, that we may serve the Egyptians? For it had been better for us to serve the Egyptians, Than we should die in the wilderness? And Moses said unto the people, fear ye not; Stand still and see the salvation of the Lord, Which He will show to you today; For the Egyptians whom ye see today, ye shall see them again no more forever. The Lord shall fight for you, and ye shall hold your peace. And the Lord said unto Moses, wherefore cryest thou unto me? Speak unto the children of Israel, that they go forward. And real quickly, Numbers 13, starting in verse 26, says, They went and came to Moses and to Aaron, And to all the congregation of the children of Israel, And to the wilderness of Paran, to Kadesh, And brought back word unto them, and to all the congregation, And showed them the fruit of the land. And they told them, and said, we came unto the land whither thou sentest us; And surely it floweth with milk and honey, and this is the fruit of it. Nevertheless, the people be strong that dwell in the land; And the cities are walled, and very great; And wherever we saw the children of Anak there, The Amalekites dwell in the land of the south; The Hittites, the Jebusites, and the Amorites dwell in the mountains; And the Canaanites dwell by the sea, and by the coast of Jordan. And Caleb steeled the people before Moses, and said, Let us go up at once and possess it; for we are well able to overcome it. But the men that went up with him said, we be not able to go up against the people; For they are stronger than we. And they brought up an evil report of the land which they had searched Unto the children of Israel, saying, the land through which we have gone to search, It is the land that eateth up the inhabitants thereof, And all the people that we saw in it are men of a great stature. And there we saw the giants, the sons of Anak which came of the giants; We were in our own side as grasshoppers, and so we were in their side. Amen, the Lord bless his reading of the word as you may have your seats tonight. Just gonna get comfortable if that's okay. Amen, if we could just take a thought out of that tonight, Amen, we'd just like to speak on Going All the Way. Amen, Going All the Way, I've just been studying this book of Exodus In my personal study for a little bit of time now And it's just been so blessing me. I think it's important to study, just like any word, if you're studying a type, It helps you to know, amen, when you see what day you're living in And you see these types in the scripture. And of course, we know that that first Exodus was only a type of the Exodus that we're living in. Brother Brandon said, it's very profitable for us to study it now Because I believe the church is in another Exodus. He said, it's a perfect type of the church today And its condition and how God is moving. And we can look at this Exodus and see all the types. And it's important, if you can find your type in the scripture, Because Brother Brandon taught us that if you can find your type, then you can't beat your type. And so just like the church would be typed by that Eve that fell And she can't beat her type and we can watch her And she's fulfilling exactly what the word said she would do. But so, and the positive, this bride is a type of that second Eve that would not fall. Amen, we're typed by Abraham, we're typed by Joshua, we're typed in the scripture. And if you can ever find your type, amen, then you just can't beat your type. And you know, amen, you know what kind of life you're gonna live. And you can look at the parallels in this Exodus. You can see the parallels between Moses and Brother Brandon. And it's just been so powerful to me to see that ministry in our age so perfectly. Amen, in this first Exodus, how they both had a supernatural birth. Amen, Brother Richie, they both met an angel in a bush and got their commission. Amen, they both had two signs to their ministry. And they both had a rejected message and went out into the wilderness And preached on standing in the gap. They both had Januses and Jambuses to withstand them. And in the evening time of their ministry, they would both preach a token message. And it lets us know, friends, that we're not just here, amen, just living any sort of a life, But we are fulfilling, amen, that was just the type of the anatide. That was just lay there, amen, to show a people that would come. And just like they had a people in that day to apply the token, There's gotta be a people in this day to apply the token. Amen, but we're not just applying a natural blood, But we are applying, amen, the supernatural token, the anatide token, The literal life of Jesus Christ, amen, in this hour. Amen, that's what we're applying. Amen, if there was a people then that would follow a pillar of fire out of Egypt, Then there's gonna be a people now that are gonna fulfill what that was typing out. Amen, there's gonna be a people, amen, that are gonna leave Egypt behind. And if there was a mixed multitude that went out then, Amen, then you can look at the scripture and say, who am I gonna be? Am I gonna be a complainer? Am I gonna be a grumbler? Or am I gonna be a possessor of the promises of God? Amen, and if you can ever find your type, then you can't beat your type. Brother Brandon said, will I be a Caleb? Will I be a Joshua in the history of time? He said, will I be a Caleb or Joshua in the book of God? Or will I tonight shrink back with my cowardly yellow disposition and move back? Amen, who are you gonna be in the history of time? Amen, if you look at your life and begin to lay it over the types in this word, You can say, Lord, who am I gonna be? What am I gonna fulfill, Lord? What am I gonna play in this Exodus? What part, Lord, am I gonna be, amen? Amen, because we see that the Exodus is a journey. It was a journey, not just a leaving, but it was a journey, amen, From a starting point to a destination. And they were leaving by promise because God had promised Abraham That they would sojourn in a land that was not theirs. It would be a strange land. And they would sojourn there for 400 years. But afterward, they would be brought out with great substance And He would take them into a land. And He told them the land they would possess, the land of the Amalekites, The land of those great giants. He said, here's where you're starting, but I'm gonna take you out And here's where I'm gonna take you, I'm gonna take you to the promised land. And he begins to tell them the great plan of the Exodus. And of course, just typing, amen, our lives, How God would call you out of your condition. God would call you out of your Egypt. He would call you out of your past and your denominations. And he said, I'll take you through justification. I'll take you through sanctification. I'll take you into the promised land of the Holy Ghost. And I will adopt you or positionally place you in that land. Amen, and that's where we're journeying, we're journeying through this Christian experience. Amen, and we're headed to glory land. Amen, we're headed to the fullness of our adoption, which is the change of our body. Amen, and it doesn't all happen in a day. Amen, but it's, amen, just as you come to it, amen, you're gonna possess it. Just as you come to this next step, amen, one step at a time. Amen, we're journeying through this Exodus. And what we wanna do tonight is get in the spirit of the journey. Amen, just like you got in the spirit of coming to this meeting And you packed your bags and you booked your tickets And you got in your cars and you begin to get in the spirit of the journey. And I think it's important as Christians, before we do anything, Amen, we wanna get in the spirit of it. Brother Brandon said, you just can't do any good until you get in the spirit. Amen, all our efforts would be in vain if we fail to get in the spirit of what we're doing. Amen, if we just come here to have a protracted meeting, As Brother Brandon would say, then we would leave here And we might say it was good to see one another, But it would be in vain if we would fail to get in the spirit, amen, of the meeting. Like John would write there in the book of Revelation, I was in the spirit on the Lord's day. Brother Brandon said, I think we could call those words the whole of the Christian life. Amen, he said, if I'm gonna pray, I'm gonna pray in the spirit. He said, if I'm gonna preach, I'm gonna preach in the spirit. If I'm gonna sing, I'm gonna sing in the spirit. And he said, he wasn't getting in the spirit of John, But he was getting in the spirit of the Lord. Amen, because it wouldn't do us any good to get in the spirit of Brother Manuel Or to get in the spirit of Brother Isaac or Brother Ronnie. But if we could just get in the spirit of the Lord, amen, and get in one mind and one accord. Amen, then there's no telling what could happen in this meeting. Amen, because His Spirit coming down amongst the people that believe the promises of God And they could say, I'm an ever-present help in the time of trouble And I'm here to meet the very desires of your heart. Amen, there's a whole world of people, amen, that are getting in the wrong spirit tonight. They're going to their ball games and they're going to their video games And they're going to their worldly entertainments and they're getting in the spirit. Amen, they're all getting in the spirit, but they're getting in the wrong spirit. But I say, why should we get in the wrong spirit When the skies are full of the genuine spirit, amen, of the living God? Amen, let's get in the spirit. Amen, Brother Brandon would say, if those individuals would come in the house of God, They would call us a bunch of holy rollers. Amen, but he said, if we're holy rollers, then those are unholy rollers. Amen, so if we're gonna get in the spirit, why not get in the spirit of something, Amen, that brings eternal value, of something that can save your children, Of something that can give you joy, of something that can give you peace, That passeth all understanding. Amen, I can't think of a better way to spend my time. And I like sports, I like those things. Oh, but when I met the Lord of my life, amen, there's not a day, amen, of joy That sports has ever brought me that could even compare, amen, To what five minutes in the presence of the Lord has done for my life. It's the satisfying portion of the believer to get in the presence of their lover, Their maker, their Lord. Oh, and begin to feel, amen, that brooding logos begin to sweep through the room And you say, this feels like home. This feels like, amen, a good place to be. Oh, when believers get in the presence of God and get in one mind and one accord. Amen, and it's not always easy, especially you've been traveling all day And as the Bible says, the spirit is willing and the flesh is weak. Amen, but that's why as a minister, amen, I don't get up behind the pulpit to speak, Amen, to the flesh of the people. I don't get up here to speak to the situation Because the situation may not look very good. I don't get up here, amen, just trying to speak to the flesh and look for a certain response. But I know that there's a soul in the heart of everyone in this building tonight. And I know, amen, if this word of God would just go forth and penetrate into that soul, Then there's a Holy Ghost in there, amen, that'll amen every word of God. Amen, you might have walked in here tonight and you don't feel like even saying amen. You don't feel like entering in it. It's been a rough week, amen, you walk in and your spirit's in another place. Amen, and you don't even feel like praising God. But that word begins to go forth and penetrate into that heart And begins to beckon to that gene seed that lays on the inside of you. And all of a sudden, amen, something begins to cry out, amen, amen, amen. And you begin to get caught up, amen, in the spirit, amen, of the Lord. Amen, if you wanna get in the spirit of revival, if you wanna have revival in your heart, Amen, it's gonna take more than the preacher. Amen, Brother Brandon said, the preacher can't bring the revival. He can preach as hard as he wants to, but unless the people get in the spirit of revival. Amen, and revive means to bring back. Amen, so I got a desire in this meeting tonight, I got a desire from your Lord. Oh, that's when you start entering in, saying, amen, brother. And that's when you start to raise your hand. You don't gotta do it for me, but if you want something from the Lord, Oh, you just begin to get in the spirit of it. As Brother Brandon preached that message, getting in the spirit, He took it out of Second Kings, how they were needing water. And there they were in the desert, waiting on the Lord. And that minstrel began to play. And the spirit of the Lord began to come down upon Elisha. Amen, and he began to see a vision. Amen, and what vision did he see? Was it to build better schools? Was it to, amen, get a better teaching, amen? Or take him to some seminary, or get a better armor, or get a better weapon? But no, the vision was get to digging. Amen, and there's gonna be water, amen, to satisfy you. Amen, that was the vision of the prophet then. And any prophet has the same vision. It's not build another organization and it's not let's gather, amen, Amen, these certain individuals and build ourselves, amen, a school of theology. But the vision still remains the same today. Amen, if you just get to digging, amen, Brother Brandon said, There was still water laying in that sand from the rock in the wilderness That was with the children of Israel. And that water was still laying there if they could just get to digging. Amen, God didn't have to send another message, but he said, just dig out all the logs. Amen, dig out all the organization, dig out all the opinions, Dig out all the grievances, dig out, amen, everything that says that you can't have it. And if you just get to digging, amen, the waters will be there. Amen, the same waters, amen, that Brother Brandon enjoyed are available tonight. Amen, if the believers would just get to digging, saying, He is the same God yesterday, today, and forever. He is the God of Elijah. He is the God, amen, that healed and delivered and opened blind eyes And raised the dead and caused the rain to walk. That same water, amen, is running through this building tonight. If somebody could just break through all the opposition and say, I want a fresh drink, Amen, of the water that my parents drank from, of the water that Moses drank from, Of the water that Elijah drank from. Oh, get out all the logs of unbelief, get out all the logs. Brother Brandon said, that old log, amen, a tenth of my wages. And he said, that old log of unbelief. Amen, I'm not here to preach on tithes tonight, but I think it's amazing Because we had a brother in our church that was seeking the Holy Ghost. Amen, and he had some things in his heart and he began to go make some things right With some people that he had some things to make right with. And he said he had stopped paying tithes because he had begun to build up a complex against the Lord. So he said, he went back and backpaid a whole year of tithes and made all those things right. And he went to a meeting and he got the Holy Ghost. Amen, what's it show to us? It shows full obedience to the Word and titles you to the token. Amen, get the logs out, and there's blessings. Amen, make things right, and there's blessings. Let go of grievances, let go of grudges, and there's blessings. He said, I don't wanna let it go, amen, but if you want a blessing, you're gonna have to get your shovel out and get to digging, amen, through the tiredness and the weariness and the struggles. Oh, he said, they wronged me, Brother Isaac, amen. Amen, but how long are you gonna let yourself be robbed of the power of God in your life? Amen, to feed your hungry soul and water your thirsty soul? I say, let it go, and let's have a revival in the house of God, where the power of God can move on our young people and move on our elders, amen, and bring life back into the hearts, amen, that are grown dry and weary in a land of heartache and discouragement. My, Brother Brandon said, as long as you say, well, bless God, I'm Methodist, I don't have to put up with such. I'm Baptist, I'm assemblies, I'm oneness. He said, alright, go ahead, you'll never see the vision. He said, but you throw that thing aside and get into the vision, see Jesus coming in the church perishing here. Get into the vision, dig right down, brother, I'm telling you, something will happen to you then. You'll get in the spirit of revival. He said, Brother Isaac, I've never seen a vision. You don't have to. I like what Brother Brandon there said. He said, get into the vision, and in other words, the word comes to a prophet. Amen, and you may not be a prophet, but the prophet's already seen a vision, but you have the ability to get into the vision that the prophet's already saw. Amen, Brother Brandon said, Elisha, amen, Brother Chris, he said, Elisha caught the vision of Elijah, and he went down to those watery banks, and that mantle fell down upon him, and he said, where is the God of Elijah? He said, Elijah's leaving, but somebody's gonna catch the vision of Elijah. Amen, Brother Brandon said, that God made preparation, that the spirit of God might remain upon the earth before he took Elijah off the scene. He made preparation, that somebody would be there to carry the message of Elijah. Oh, I like what the Bible says about John the Baptist, I must decrease, but he must increase. I'm leaving, but there's one coming who's greater than me. And Brother Brandon said, the same thing would repeat in this last days. And Brother Brandon came and introduced the Messiah to us. And then he said, I must decrease, but he must increase. And there would be a bride on the scene, the bride coming of Jesus Christ, to catch the vision of the Elijah ministry, and say, I got it, Brother Brandon. I got it, Brother Brandon, you showed the seed. I catch the vision, amen, if you see a bride marching to this word, and then I say, Lord, I catch the vision. Brother Brandon, you saw a bride that would be without spartan wrinkle, and I catch the vision. And what are you gonna do with it? I'm gonna be like that little cockney boy Brother Brandon talked about, amen, that got a message from the king. Amen, he didn't write the message, but he got the message, and he ran with it. That's what we're doing tonight. We don't have to get, amen, we don't have to see a new vision, we've already got a vision. Our eagle already stood in the watchtower and said, this is the age we're living, and this is what's gonna happen. This is where we're at, and all he said, amen, that there would be one coming that would catch that vision and run with it, oh, like those mighty man. Amen, that said, David, if you wanna drink water, your least desire is our command. Oh, brother, somebody caught the vision of the king and said, if you got a desire, it's my command, and they ran with that vision. Oh, it'll take a vision, as the Bible says, without vision, the people perish. Amen, you could come into this meeting tonight, just to sit and watch and leave, amen, in the same condition. But if you get a vision of what you wanna get out of this meeting. Amen, Brother Brandon said, I surrender my thinking. I won't no more think about my sickness. I won't think about the disease I had. I ain't thinking about nothing but thinking what you said. And then he began to say, and you, I'm sure all have heard it, how Brother Brandon said, now there's a well person standing out in front of you. And what you wanna do is start walking in to that well body, and to begin to tell them, amen, to just keep walking into the vision. He said, why do I need to get a vision, Brother Isaac? Amen, because you don't just wanna stay where you're at. But as believers, we're constantly moving forward, constantly seeking new heights and new depths. And so you get a vision out in front of you of what you wanna be. You say, I want more joy, Brother Isaac, get a vision and start walking into it. I want more peace, Brother Isaac, get a vision of it and start walking into it, amen. Brother Brandon said, every time you open the Bible, you see a vision. And as long as the vision lines up with this word, you have a right. Amen, to put it out in front of you and start walking into it. So I want the Holy Ghost, Brother Isaac, amen, repent and be baptized for the remission of your sins, and walk into the Holy Ghost. He would say, I want my family back. Get a vision of it and start walking into the vision. Oh, I pray that, amen, there's a renewed vision sweeps across this meeting. Amen, where sons and daughters of God would begin to claim every promise of God, not leave it on a shelf somewhere, but get a vision where all things are possible. Amen, where everything belongs to you as a son or daughter of God, and you got a right. Amen, and if you ever get a vision, it'll bring perseverance to your life. Brother Brandon said it, he said, I trust that the same spirit tonight, when you're prayed for, whether you're prayed for here at the platform or not, will let you get a vision of Christ promised to you, and just urge you to keep on. He said, listen, brother, if you can come this morning with a vision of the will of God, if you can come with the word of God, I don't care what happens, I'm going to be persistent. If you can get a vision of the will of God over your life, you can be persistent. And I say, if you ever get a vision, don't settle for less. Amen, when God promised Abraham, Isaac, and Ishmael came along, he didn't say, I guess this is it, I'll just settle for this. But God promised that his seed would come through Isaac, and so he didn't settle, but he stayed until the vision came to pass. Amen, when God promised, Brother Brandon, Joseph, and Sarah come along, and all those people said, oh, Josephine, Josephine. But Brother Brandon had a vision, amen, of what was coming, so he didn't settle, amen, for Sarah. But he said, no, I've got a Joseph coming. And if you can get a vision of yourself walking in total deliverance, and then Satan might try to sell you sure of total deliverance, but don't settle. If you ever get a vision, just be persistent and keep walking into the vision. I'll say, this seasons change, but the vision doesn't change. Amen, seasons are gonna change. Churches are gonna go through ups and downs. Amen, your eyes are gonna see things that are gonna discourage you, but the vision will never change. Oh, we're operating under a vision. Oh my, brother, I looked up that definition of getting in the spirit. And one of the definitions is to fully embrace the enthusiasm and positive attitude surrounding a particular event or occasion, often by actively participating in activities related to it and adopting its theme. Amen, if you wanna get in the spirit of something, you adopt the theme of it. Amen, if it comes to the fall season, you start bringing out the fall decorations, and in the spring season, you bring out the spring decorations. And in the football season, they put on the football clothes. And in the hunting season, we get the camel out of the cupboard, and we get in the spirit, amen, of what we're, what season we're in. Amen, and the problem is, is Satan will try to give you the wrong theme over your life and try to make you think that your theme of life is just to be, amen, depressed or just to be anxious, and you'll begin to adopt the theme over your life. I'm always gonna stay in this condition. I'm always gonna walk in this wilderness land. I'm always gonna live under this taskmaster. I'm always gonna be whipped and have to gather straw to build bricks the rest of my life. But if they would've just remembered a promise, that God was gonna bring them out of that land. Amen, if they wouldn't have forgot the vision, they could've persevered, amen, but they got discouraged. Amen, but if you just let the theme of this word be the theme of your life and walk into that vision, you say, amen, he was wounded for my transgressions. He was bruised for my iniquities, the chastisement of his peace. Amen, it's upon me, and I have a right, amen, to adopt the theme of this word, to be the theme of my life and walk into the vision. Amen, it's getting in the spirit of Exodus, friends. It's getting in the spirit of coming out of where you are and going in to what God promised that you could possess. Amen, Brother Brandon said that sometimes those cogs of prophecy, they move slow, but they always move sure. And it may not look like it's happening, amen, but if God promised it, then it's happening right on time. He said, all things work together for good to them that love God. Many are the afflictions of the righteous, but the Lord would deliver them out of them all. Brother Brandon said, that time inside are two of the worst enemies God has. Neither one of them declare anything about God, and you're looking at it, and you're saying, it just don't look like it's gonna happen. But what does the vision say? It says, we're coming out of this land. Hey, I think it just so struck me, because I began to study this book of Exodus, and the very first verse of the book says, these are the names of the children of Israel which came into Egypt. Every man in his household came with Jacob. What does that tell me? That tells me that if the Bible would say, before this whole journey of Exodus, would say that these are the names of the children of Israel which came into Egypt. It didn't call them the children of Egypt, because what they were going through was not who they were. But it said, this is the children of Israel which is coming into a trial. This is the children of God which are coming in, amen, to a sickness. This is the children of God which are coming in to a little bit of affliction. But just remember, you are not the child of depression. You are not the child of nervousness. You are not the child of cancer or diabetes. You are not the child, amen, of blood pressure problems. But you are a child of God who just stepped into the wilderness for a few minutes. Oh, but Brother Brandon would speak about Moses, amen, he was raised up under Pharaoh's palace. But I'll tell you what, he wasn't an Egyptian. He was just raised up in it for a season. But when it came to a point in time, God would call him out of that and place him in his position as a prophet of God. And you might've been raised up under Catholicism. You might've been raised up under Lutheranism or some sort of denomination, but you were never meant to stay there. But God allowed you to be there for a season, to teach you some things. And then he said, now it's the appointed time, I'm gonna call him out and place him in my kingdom as a son or daughter of God. Oh, just like a chicken would be, an eagle would be raised in the chicken yard, but he didn't belong there. And Brother Brandon would teach us that you act like the age you belong in. And you belong, God knew what age you belonged in, and that's why he placed you in this age. He didn't just spin a wheel, Brother Dale, and say, well, I guess I'll put him here. I guess I'll put him there. But he knew what age you belonged in, and that's why he placed you in that age. And you say, well, if I would've just lived in an easier age, and I could be an overcomer. But I'll say this, what you would be in that age is what you're gonna be in this age. Amen, so don't make that an excuse, that if I would just live in a better age. But he said, you act like the age that you live in.[1306.76] But He said, you act like the age that you live in, and so if you live in this age, amen, if you would have been an overcomer back then, then you're gonna be an overcomer now. And it reminds me of that story Brother Bran would tell, about that slave. And he said, why is he different than all those other slaves? Because he's the son of a king in a foreign land. And then you can live in the middle of a trial, and have a different attitude than the rest of the world, because you are a part, you're not a part of this land to see an age. Oh, but you are a part of another age. God said, come out from among them, come into my presence, come into my blessings. Amen, your flesh is still in this age, but your soul has been called up to the heavenlies, and saying, this time, like you act, amen, like the age that you belong in. It's time you start acting like an eagle, it's time you start acting like the son or daughter of a king. Oh, you'll never be satisfied outside of your position. But if you ever recognize where you belong, then you'll recognize the vision for your life, and then you can be perseverant. That's what they had to recognize down there in Egypt. Amen, they caught the vision that Joseph had had, when he saw Easter, and he said, yet in my flesh I shall see God. And then Brother Bran taught us that Jacob, when he was down there in Egypt, said, don't bury me in Egypt. And Joseph caught the same vision, and he said, you can put me in a casket, but don't you bury me here. Brother Bran said, where was Abraham, Isaac, and Sarah buried? He said, they were buried in the promised land. And they said, it's written between the lines. But they caught the vision that the resurrection wasn't gonna take place in Egypt, but it was gonna take place in the promised land. And they said, don't bury me in this Egyptian land. Oh, but when you leave, and you're gonna leave, you carry us out of here, and take our bones, amen, to that promised land. And Brother Bran said, I caught the spiritual revelation of the coming of the Lord. That's why I left the Baptist church, because I knew that the resurrection wasn't gonna take place in some denomination, but he said, don't bury me here in the dead creed. Don't bury me here in this dead land, but carry my spirit into the body of Christ, for that's where the resurrection's gonna take place. And if their same spirit, amen, that dwelled in Christ dwells in you, it shall also, amen, give you an exodus. It shall also quicken your mortal bodies. Amen, it'll carry you out of this world, and carry you into another land. Oh, they had leaving on their mind, friends. They said, we're here, amen, but we're not here to stay. And I think it's important for us to remember that. And in the natural, when you go on a trip, amen, you pack your suitcase. Amen, but you, sometimes you don't even unpack it, because you're only there for a few days. And so you live out of the suitcase, because that mentality is there, I'm here, but I'm only here for a short time. Amen, and that's what the mentality of the children of Israel was. They said, don't put your stakes down too deep, that when the pillar of fire, amen, begins to move forward, amen, that you're gonna stay there in that condition, but you're following the pillar of fire. Oh, we are in this world, friends, but we are not ever. Amen, we are here, but we're not here to stay. Amen, our destination is glory, we're only here for a season, but here we have no continuing city, amen, but we seek one to come. I think it applies to the spiritual too. Amen, don't ever put down your stakes in the trial. Amen, you're not there to stay. Amen, Brother Bran said, that's what he's spreading this morning to you sick people. You sick people that seems like you're going to sit there all your life. If the devil can get you to believe that, he's got you. And he begins to speak about a girl that had bad ankles, and high blood pressure, and many things wrong. And Brother Bran said, Satan would give her a stroke if he could. He'd lay her up yonder on the bed of affliction. He'll put her out of commission if he can, for he don't want her testimony. Oh my, but then Brother Bran would go on to explain it, and say, why did this happen to this girl? Was it because, and then he takes it to scripture, Brother Josh, and he takes it to the blind boy, that they said, why is he blind? Because his parents sinned, or because his mother sinned, or his father sinned? But no, he's blind, that the works of God might be made manifest. He said, that's why I believe, is with this girl, she wasn't crippled, and wasn't going through the affliction because of some sin, but that the works of God might be made manifest. Amen, because the devil will try to convince you, and that is God's will for you to stay in your condition. That is God's will for you to be sick, but Brother Richie, if it was God's pleasure for us to be sick, then he defeated his purpose when he went to Calvary, and died for our sickness, and died for our sins. It's a lying devil, amen, trying to keep the children of God in bondage, and say, you belong here, you belong here, you belong here. But when the eagle catches the revelation that he doesn't belong there, amen, then you better make a path, because he's going to where he belongs. Oh, you see, it's a twisting, Satan twists the word. Amen, because it's a true principle. Because there's times where Brother Bran would encounter people that would have sin in their lives that would need dealt with. Amen, but I say it's very small in comparison to the people the devil tells that to. The times that it's actually true. If I could say that, just like you would hear him come through the prayer line, time after time, and say, Brother Bran, I feel like I've sent away my day of grace. I don't know if I've ever heard one time on tape, where that was actually true, because they were proving, by even being there, telling them that, that they were still at his eye in their heart. It's Satan trying to twist the scripture, to keep the children in bondage, and say, you belong in this condition, you belong in this sickness. But Brother Bran said that his will is his word. And if I can get a vision of his will, amen, then Satan will have to watch out when, oh man, when a son or daughter of God, when a young person really starts to break past that barrier, and recognize who they are. Oh, it's new selling, brother, because the will of God becomes apparent to their life. Amen, that they have a right to possess every promise, they have a right to it. They recognize who they are. Oh my, amen, it's a lying devil. It's an obstacle. And he didn't say that there wouldn't be obstacles in the journey. He didn't say that, but he actually would tell us, that it's a testing that comes after the victory. He said, people would think, when they went into Brother Branham's meeting, if I just get called out, that's the end of it. But Brother Bran said, no. Many times there would be disappointments come, because that's where the testing time would come. God tests every son that comes to Him. And it's just about the time you get victory, you start to feel that old funny feeling, starting to circle around, and you say, oh no, not again. Oh no, I went through this cycle so many times, oh no, not again. But the Bible said, when an unclean spirit goes out of a man, then he would try to get those seven other spirits, and try to come back. Amen, and if the good men of the house, which is faith, is not standing there, amen, to deny him and renounce him, then he would try to make it worse than it ever was in the beginning. And Brother Bran would even teach the people that, and that's where many of them would lose their healing, because Brother Bran would teach them, that a demon for seventy-two hours, that's the space where that demon is dying, and people would say, well, I'm getting worse. And then they would receive back their condition, but he was showing them, no, you're not getting worse, that's actually the sign of your healing. Amen, if you realize it, Brother Bran taught us, that Satan actually has permission to test you. He said, less than a week after you have a powerful meeting, Satan is permitted to come back in, and say, oh, you didn't really get to victory. Amen, I seen you dancing up there, amen, with those other people, look at them now. They don't even serve the Lord anymore. And he's trying to say, it wasn't real, it was never real. Amen, but Brother Bran said, you were the one that stood on those sacred stands, and God gave Satan permission to come in and test you, to prove, amen, that what you got was really real. But if you'll just drive down a stake and say, Satan, I recognize your bluff. You've been given permission to do this, but it's the very proof, that what I got is a genuine experience with the living God. Oh, he said, oh, that one left a message, what's that have to do with me? That one went this way, that one went that way. But I know the pillar of fire that was on the sacred stands, when I had a conference with Almighty God, and Satan cannot talk, amen, cannot talk me out of my experience, because I met him. Oh, that old devil tried to tell you, he said, that's where we fail. That's the failing of the church regardless of what takes place, it's God, move forward. Amen, just like God gave, amen, the devil permission to challenge Job. He said, he's in your hand, devil. Amen, but hey, he couldn't test Job without first getting permission, Brother Joe. Satan can't touch a hair on your head, without his permission, but God gave him permission to test Job. And so he starts testing Job, just like God gave him permission to test you, but he's doing it because he has confidence in you. Like he had confidence in Job, he's trying to see your reaction to the action. He's trying to see if you really stand, amen, for what God gave you. Amen, you start to really believe in, in the divine healing and the power of God, Satan will come along, amen, out of permission to begin to test that, and God has seen. Amen, if they're just an illegitimate son, they'll turn back. But he's proving his signs, and he's showing, amen, that he that endured to the end shall be saved. Amen, many start, but it's not he that starts, it's he that finishes, that's the overcomer. And many started, and then they're not here anymore. Amen, but why are you still here? Because you met a reality. Amen, why are you still here tonight? Because you met something that was more than a feeling. You met something that was more than a man. Oh, like Moses met that pillar of fire in the bush, and he didn't just go away saying, I saw a fire, it was a beautiful fire, it was a wonderful fire, it burned so bright. But he said, I heard a voice from that fire, and that voice told me who I was. And that voice told me where I came from, and where I was going, oh. Amen, Brother Dale, many saw that first pull, many saw that second pull, and they walked away and said, there's nothing to it. But there was an elect people that stayed around long enough, to hear the voice of the sign, and something caught them, and they began to recognize who they were. And that they weren't just another church, but they were the bride of Jesus Christ, saying, this is where I belong. He's calling my name, you're an eagle, come out of it, you don't belong there. You're an eagle, you belong in the message, it's your food, it's eagle food for the hungry soul. Oh, but that mixed multitude went out. Brother Bran said, every time the phenomena takes place, it calls a mixed multitude. And they begin to go out, and that's what really caused the trouble with Israel. Brother Bran said, that was what caused the trouble, when they got to marching. And that old mixed multitude began to say, well, why, why do we, why do we follow this pillar of fire? Why do we follow this prophet? And they begin to provoke God with their own belief. As it says in Hebrews 3, they enter not into the rest, because their own belief. And they actually provoked God, when God had brought them out of Egypt. You know that ten plagues had just happened, God had turned dust to lice, God had done all these things. But when they got out to that Red Sea, Brother Ronnie, and they began to see that dust of that Egyptian army, they began to get afraid. Amen, the very God who had just turned that dust into lice, and now they see the dust of the enemy, and they're afraid, and they forgot that the God that brought them out of that could bring them out of this. They forgot that the God that brought them this far could take them the rest of the way. And they begin to provoke God with their own belief. Every obstacle they got to, they provoked God. When they got a little thirsty, they provoked God and said, ah, did you bring us out here to die of thirst, Moses? We would have been better off back in Egypt, Moses. Did you bring us out here to die of hunger, Moses? We would have been better off, and we would have been better off in Egypt, with our garlic, where we had a good meal every day, we would have been better off. And when they got to Cadis, Borneo, they said, we would have been better off in Egypt. And Brother Bran, in the book of Acts, it says, that in their hearts, they turned back. Amen, they didn't even turn back at that time, in reality. But he said, in their hearts, they begin to turn back. Amen, you can sit on a message pew, but in your heart, you're turning back. And we would have been better off, we would have been better off in that place. Amen, it wasn't even in reality, but they just begin to turn back, and get discouraged because of the opposition. They said, the giants, they're too many, they're too big, we can't take them and their attitude. Begin to become one of disbelief. And the Bible says that they tempted God ten times. You know what it's doing? Satan trying to get you to look at the obstacle, and allow it to paralyze you in your condition, and cause you to stay where you're at. I was just out the other day, finally had a free day to get some work done, and I was trying to go and get some mulch to mulch the yard, and they closed at twelve noon. So I thought I had plenty of time, I go and get the trailer. And Brother Josh, you probably, you know, you're trying to get a job done. And I got this trailer, and I had trouble hooking it up. I finally got it hooked up, Brother Jeremy, and I'm driving down, amen, to get this mulch, and they closed at twelve, so I'm like, okay, I'm gonna make it, I got it in the GPS. And I start following that GPS, and it brought me into downtown. And sure enough, they were having a Memorial Day parade, right in the middle of downtown. And I couldn't get nowhere, I was trying to turn around, I had a big old truck and trailer. It's all one-way streets, and I'm turning, I'm about ready to drive down the wrong way on a one-way street. I'm trying to back up in little parking lots, I'm driving through little alleys with dumpsters, hoping I don't knock off a mirror. And I'm talking to my wife, and I'm getting stressed out. Sure enough, I'm about to miss my appointment. And very quickly, discouragement began to set in, and there was a little bit of opposition. I just began to think, my, and I began to get discouraged and stressed and ready just to give the whole thing up, and just sit there in that parking lot. That's what Satan would like to do. Amen, the first little sign of opposition, and he tries to get you to stay where you're at, and paralyze your faith. Amen, and what he uses to paralyze faith, many times, he'll try to get you in a complex of self-pity, and think, well, I've been sick so long, I've been struggling so long. I don't know if I'm ever gonna get out. And Brother Bran said, it actually builds up a complex, it's a self-pity, it's a complex. You know, I remember the onions I ate in Egypt, I remember the garlic I ate in Egypt, and it builds up a complex, amen, where the person wants to be petted all the time, and wants everyone to know how hard they're having it. This ain't very spiritual, but I was in the airport, I was in the airport on the way over here, and I'm eavesdropping on this phone call, and she's talking about her friend. And she says, there was her friend, and she's got all this condition, and she begins to talk. And she said, she's on the pity train, and the pity train just derailed. Everyone's tired of hearing about it. Amen, she's sick, they said, she's not dying any faster than the rest of us. I just cracked me up, I said, well, that's true. Amen, she's on the pity train, but it derailed, but there's a truth to that. Because Brother Bran said, it actually builds up a complex. And it's an enemy to healing, because it will keep you, amen, day after day, year after year. Amen, not looking to the promise, but looking to the opposition, and saying, it's been twelve years, it's been thirteen years. Amen, but faith looks past the opposition, and looks to the promise. Brother Bran said, I was in that complex one time. I got in that little spot, but I picked up a book by F.F. Bosworth, called Christian Confession. And he said, the believer doesn't look at the problem, but the believer looks at the promise by faith. And that promise will carry you out of the condition, and carry you into your healing. Amen, what about Abraham and Sarah, twenty-five years? Amen, but they weren't looking at the opposition. Amen, but what did they do, brother Chris? They got in the spirit. They began to buy the booties in the crib, as they were gonna have a baby. It's been twenty-five years, oh really? It feels like it flew by. I think I'm stronger than the day I started, because they weren't looking at the opposition, but they were looking at the promise. Brother Bran said, there was the woman with the blood issue for twelve years, but she didn't have self-pity. But when Almighty God came into the presence, she said, if I could just touch the hem of his garment, I don't care if it's been twelve years, I don't care if it's been fifty years, if I could just touch the hem of his garment, then I could be whole. Amen, Brother Joe, what about Mariah Puget? They diagnosed her with alopecia, and the opposition looks great, but she began to get in the spirit of it, and she got some bobby pins, and carried them into prayer line one night, and she just began to believe against the opposition. And now she has a head, a beautiful head, because she didn't look for self-pity. She didn't look for a bunch of negative confession, but she looked to the promise, and she broke through the walls of unbelief, and she's living in the fulfillment tonight. Oh, it'll cripple your faith every time. Negative confession will cripple your faith every time. Complaining will cripple your faith every time. Brother Bran said, that old complaining negativity, amen, it'll eat away at your faith. It'll hurt that faith, amen, but that's not what the believer's meant to do. Amen, but the believer, amen, is built to look past that, and look to the promise. Condemnation, condemnation will paralyze your faith. Amen, the devil will try to, amen, first he'll let you go through a trial, and then, and then you might come through that trial quickly, but the condemnation that follows that trial will leave you in a state of paralysis, thinking, if I was a good Christian, I wouldn't have be facing this thing. If I was a good Christian, I wouldn't be here. If I was really a believer, I wouldn't have those thoughts. And you become paralyzed, and fear begins to creep in, and fear begins to paralyze you. Amen, until you, amen, until you can't move anymore, until you can't speak anymore. Amen, until you stop moving in the promises of God, until you no longer speak the promises of God, because Satan is trying to get you to stay where you're at. Amen, and put down your stakes, and give up, and say, I guess this is the way I'm supposed to spend the rest of my life. Oh, a little bite, that little bite, Brother Bran said, in those foreign lands, those little insects, they bite you, if you pull them off, then it can paralyze you. The diseases that they have over there. And sometimes it's just a little bite. Oh, somebody says something, amen, amen, somebody, Brother Bran said, people come through the line, someone told them they were a witch. And so there they were, they never left that for years, because somebody told them they were a witch. Somebody told them they had seven spirits, somebody lied on them, some preacher, God in the flesh, amen, and told them something that wasn't true. Amen, and they stayed there, in that cage of bondage, for years, and for years, and for years, and fear, and condemnation. Amen, but fear will keep you looking at the circumstances. Oh, but Brother Bran said, faith doesn't look at the circumstances. He said, you take that old mother cooking over that grease, hot grease, it pops out and burns her hand, he said, if she just reaches for that ointment, it'll burn her. He said, I can prove to you, it's the scare that brings the burn. Amen, because when Paul was there, had crossed over that storm, he seen that snake had bit him, he shook it off in the fire, and it didn't hurt him, because, amen, he had a revelation, amen, that God told him on the boat, that he must go before Caesar. And so when the circumstances should have brought death, amen, faith said, no, I've got somewhere to go. I'm not yet to my destination, oh, I'm not yet. Amen, to the fullness of the promise, Brother Bran said, Peter, walking on that water, circumstances would have caused him to drown, but faith kept him on top of the water. Amen, because faith doesn't look at the circumstances, but faith looks at the promise. Oh, fear can't do nothing for you, fear will keep you bound, fear will keep you in a cage, and then fear will have you wondering, amen, if it's gonna happen, if you're gonna be healed, if you're gonna be delivered. Amen, and all the times, amen, that you're not waiting for something to happen. Amen, all the times Satan will, you know, trying to convince you, that something's not gonna happen, or something's gonna happen. And he'll try to convince you that, that you're not gonna be healed, and that rest of the time,[1436.92] And he'll try to convince you that you're not gonna be healed and that rest of the time, he's trying to convince you that bad things are gonna happen. And it'll keep you in a cycle, a cycle of fear, a cycle of torment, living under a nervous cage, waiting for the next bad thing to happen. And I've been there in my younger years. That nervous spirit will always try to wait for the next thing to pass and try to keep you convinced that once that passes, that you're gonna live a happy life. And then it passes and sure enough, brother Joe, another obstacle pops up and you're back in the same cycle again. And it's the bondage of fear and it'll keep you in a cycle. But faith can deliver you out of the cycle. Faith can deliver you out of that tormenting spirit. Faith can deliver you out of that bondage. Oh, and set your feet on solid ground. I like what the Bible says in Isaiah 14. For the Lord will have mercy on Jacob and will yet choose Israel and set them in their own land. And the strangers shall be joined with them and they shall cleave to the house of Jacob. And the people shall take them and bring them to their place. And the house of Israel shall possess them and the land of the Lord for servants and handmaids. And they shall take them captives whose captives they were. And they shall rule over their oppressors. And it shall come to pass in the day that the Lord shall give them rest from their sorrow and from the fear and from the hard bondage wherein thou wast made to serve, that thou shalt take up this proverb against the king of Babylon and say, how hath the oppressor ceased, the golden city ceased? Brother Brandon showing that those children of Israel would come to a place of living under an oppressor until they would come to a place that they would actually rule over the oppressor that once ruled over them. And you can come to the place where you can break out of the cycle where that demon that once ruled over you, you can rule over it. And then by the power of faith. And then you can either let the circumstances control you or you can control the circumstances. And brother Brandon said that you were born here to control all circumstances. What am I trying to say? I'm trying to say that as a believer, you are not just another Christian that sits in one of these denominational churches, but you are an amateur God that's been put here to have dominion over sin, to have dominion over flesh, to have dominion over the devil. And you don't have to sit there and knock down to the devil and buckle down to the pressure. But you can rise up in faith and say, Satan, you've ruled over me long enough. It's time that you get under my feet. And then because indeed Jesus Christ went to Calvary and everything that he conquered at Calvary become under his feet and if I'm in him, it's under my feet. Oh, I used to have a handkerchief that had written on it from wailing to rejoicing. And then because when God does something for you, sometimes it's good to write it down and remember it. And then because you can go in a meeting like this from wailing to rejoicing. And then you can do it before the trial ever stops. When faith catches the vision of the promise and then while the word's going forth and in your spirit, you can change from looking at the condition to rejoicing in the answer to the promise. And then you can change from fear and unbelief to rejoicing in the promise. There's a place you can overcome paralyzed faith. Brother Brandon spoke of that Syriphian woman that come into the presence of Jesus and she had many hindrances. And she was of another race, she was of another condition. She come there and all the disciples said, we don't have time for her. And she's bothered now, she keeps crying now. And when she even got in the presence of Jesus, he said, as it meet for me to give meat to a dog in your race is a bunch of dogs and how that would have paralyzed the faith of a carnal believer. But that woman had something different about her, that she said, this is my moment in the presence of Jesus. And she began to push back, brother Brandon said, she had many hindrances, but her faith had no hindrances. And they said, I'm feeling bad and you can let it hinder you. I said, I'm feeling discouraged and you can let it hinder you. But faith has no hindrances, but faith looks past and says, I'm in the presence of Jesus. And then he is the one that can turn it around. And faith began to push back through the obstacle. Faith began to push back and say, I am in his presence. Oh, that's how you overcome paralyzed faith. You stop looking at the condition and you start looking at the promise. And then brother Brandon said that that's how Moses overcame paralyzed faith. He brings a whole strain on paralyzed faith and why Christ speak. And he says, either the glamour will paralyze your faith or your faith will paralyze the glamour. And then he said, Moses' faith paralyzed the glamour because he refused to look at Egypt and all of its wealth and riches, but he looked out and saw a group of people and said by faith, he chose to become one of them and he looked past the opposition and he refused to settle for anything less than what the vision was over his life. You see, when Pharaoh come before him and said, oh, and then show you can go, but don't you take those cattle and don't you take this and don't you take that. And you can go so far, but don't you go all the way. And you can go here and then you and your elders can go worship, but oh, don't let that religion get amongst the people. Don't let the young people get that religion. But brother Brandon said Moses did not believe in a so far religion, but Moses said, I'm going all the way and you're stuck with me until you let the cattle go and you're stuck with me until you let the young people go and you're stuck with me until you let the elders go. And then Moses began to overcome paralyzed faith by not listening to the voices of opposition. But he was looking at the promise and said, God promised that we would return to a mountain and worship. And I'm not going to worship without some sacrifices, so I'm gonna need my cattle. And hey, I'm not going to worship without my children, so I'm gonna need my young people. I'm not going to worship without my elders, so Pharaoh, you're stuck with me until you let the elders go, until you let the mothers go, until you let the fathers go. Oh, I'm so glad that a man can live so close in the presence of God until the devil don't know what to do with him. And he says, go, fine, just go, get out of here. Oh, Moses had a faith that said, I'm going all the way. And then the devil, that old voice opposition said, you're never gonna make it. It's not for you, it's too late, you might as well give up. Oh, and go sit up here and just be a dead Christian, but faith says, no. I do not believe in a so far religion, but I believe in going all the way. He said, I'm justified, brother Isaac, there's more land for you to possess. I'm sanctified, there's more land for you to possess. Don't put down your stakes, the pillar of fire is here to lead you into higher highs. Brother Brandon said, there's a difference between the pillar of fire and the pillar of salt. And you're gonna go one way. And then, but we are not like lots of life to look back and turn into pillar of salt. But we have a faith in a heart that says, there goes that pillar of fire. And I wonder where it's leading, let's go find out what it has for us. Oh, there's giants, brother Isaac, I don't care, the promise says we can take the land. Oh, and then this is not a halfway religion. Brother Brandon said, God does not make halfway Christians. A Christian can be halfway, but God doesn't make halfway Christians. A preacher can be halfway, but God doesn't make halfway preachers. And I just wanna believe this word enough that if God's called me to be a Christian and God's called me to be a preacher, I do not have to settle for a halfway and then look wrong, ready to see in spirit. But if God said, this land is ours, I say, give me my mountain. And then there's a deep calling to the deep in my heart that says, I can have my joy. Oh, don't turn back to that old halfway religion, don't turn back to that old lukewarm religion. We're not here to compromise. Oh, I say, I salute the men of God that preach this gospel in this building. And I do not compromise on this word of God, who do not bow down to a halfway devil and give up your land to some devil that says you can't preach it. Oh, but brother Brandon began to talk about how the move is on. He began to talk about how people receiving the Holy Ghost, Don Wells was receiving the Holy Ghost. Dr. Reedhead was receiving the Holy Ghost. It said, the move is on and then one of those brothers ran down to Billy Graham and said, hey, brother Billy, and then come and get it, the move is on. And brother Billy Graham said, I believe that, but I just can't preach it. And that was the problem with Billy Graham. And then he might get 3,000 converts, but when they would come back, he would only have 30 because he would refuse to move on into the Pentecostal blessing and then to lead the people to something that would keep them. And I say, many ministries have been paralyzed by looking at this word and refusing to cry out against it because of the pressure of some devil or some pharaoh that's whispering in their ear, you can't preach that, the days of miracles are past, that was first another day. That was just for brother Brandon saying, we're waiting for brother Brandon to return to preach that kind of thing. Oh, but I'm not looking to that devil, but I believe. And then if God opened up this revealed word to us, then why should we preach half of it and let the devil have the other half? But I say, let's possess the land. Oh, the Bible says the revealed things belong to us. I say, let's possess it. And then do not compromise on this word. And then, but we are not here to bow down to a devil, we are here to possess the land. The Bible says, be not entangled again. Stand fast in the liberty where with Christ have made you free. And be not entangled again in the yoke of bondage or halfway. Brother Brandon said, all those old pilgrims, brother Manuel, they left that old land to come here for freedom. But it wasn't very many years before they began to go right back to those chains that they left over in that old land. And then brother Brandon would begin to tell us, you have to die out to that old age to be born into this new age. And then we do not leave that old land, brother Dale. They'll drag those old chains of bondage into this message. And then send in the message, pew, with the same chains that the Lutherans wear and the same chains that the Baptists wear, but we come into this land for freedom. We come in this land to enjoy the liberty of our salvation. We come in this land to have a total deliverance. Oh, as brother Brandon said, sin made a blockade. And brother Brandon tells a story about Arnold von Winkleweed. Well, there we go. Sin had made a blockade and there in that old Switzerland land, there was a blockade. But he said, this day I'll give my life for Switzerland. And then that my people might conquer this army and live in freedom. And Jesus came on the cross, didn't he, brother Richie? And he said, I see some sons of Adam down there. And then this day I give my life, that some sons of Adam might enjoy the liberty. And he began to cry out, make way for liberty, make way for liberty. He gave up his own life that somebody might catch the vision and begin to possess the land that he said was harsh and make way for a people to enjoy their liberty. And then you do not have to sit here and worship in a halfway manner. And then the devil will try to hold you under condemnation, but there is therefore now no condemnation to them which are in Christ Jesus, who walked not after the flesh but after the spirit. And there was that woman washing Jesus' feet. And brother Brandon said, she didn't just pour out some of it, but she poured out all of it. She had a checkered past, but she was in the presence of one that could proclaim her sins are forgiven. And brother Brandon said, you come into this world and you would like to paralyze this world and give it a stroke. But he said, the world has paralyzed you and gave you a stroke and you're helpless. You're sitting there, you can't move, you're paralyzed. But Christ came and shed his blood that you might be loose and have remission from your stroke and have a full recovery. Oh, you know, there is in cancer, there's partial remission and total remission. Partial remission, the cancer might still be there, but it's shrunk. And then we lived under a partial remission under the blood of bulls and goats. But when Jesus Christ came on Calvary and he was wounded for your transgressions and bruised for your iniquities and shed his blood for your condemnation, he did it to bring the church to complete remission. And he said, your cancer is gone. If you can believe it, he which the son has made free is free indeed. And the truth shall set you free. And the truth is coming forth from the message of the hour saying, you're free, you're free, you're free. Stand fast in the liberty, you're free. And then just don't turn around, you're free, you're gonna make it, you're free. You're free from your sin, you're free from your condemnation, you're free from your bondage. Oh, you're free to have total deliverance, oh, without hindrance. There was two classes, there was two classes at that Red Sea. That mixed multitude turned around in their hearts and said, we were better off back in Egypt. But a prophet was standing there and inspiration began to strike him and he said, oh, stand still and you'll see the salvation of the Lord. You need not fight in this battle, only stand still. Brother Brandon said, inspiration struck him because the Lord hadn't even spoke to him yet. But after he spoke it, the Lord spoke back. This is how you're gonna do it, Moses, you're gonna stretch forth your rod. Don't cry unto me, Moses, speak and go forward. That's the message to the church, go forward. And then there is no retreat in God's army, there is no place to turn around in the wilderness. There's no place, there's no stopping point until we reach our destination. But the messages speak and go forward. And Moses got a vision of an army drowning in the sea. And he said, stand still, I see a vision, the Lord met me. And he said, I would have my vengeance upon Pharaoh and upon his host and upon his army. And Moses said, yes, Lord, I'll just stand still. And as he stood still, God made the enemy stand still and watch him cross through the Red Sea and drown his enemy in the Red Sea. Oh, friends, there's coming a day where the devil will have to stand still and be cast into a lake of fire while God's children go into an eternity. And then God will make your enemy stand still if you'll just stand still and look at the promises of God. God will make your enemy stand still and watch the promise be fulfilled in your life. God will make the devil stand still and watch you receive the Holy Ghost in this meeting. If you'll just stand still long enough to hear that still small voice that says, you can take the land. If you'll just stand still long enough to hear that voice say, you can possess it, then the enemy will have to stand still, that's been plaguing your life and watch you take the land. Oh, keep going, friends, don't stop, keep pressing the battle. Oh, I was driving the other day and I was standing there, sitting there in my car at some train tracks. And that train was about to pass, I could see it, it was about to pass, but there were some trees and some brush there. And at the back of the line, I looked back and I seen at the back of the line, the guy was starting to turn around. And then because surely he thought, I've hit a blockade and then I can't make it any farther, I'm gonna turn around. But if he would have just asked me from my perspective, I could have told him, don't turn around now. The train's about to pass and we can go and sail into free land. And if we could have just asked me, I could have told him, don't stop, don't turn around. Oh, but we had a watchman standing in the tower and say, and then dark weather to see is here, but the morning star is shining, arise and shine, morning stars, our light has come. Don't stop now, I know it looks dark, but don't turn around, don't stop, don't give up. Don't give up on the promise, the blockade is almost over and we're about to possess the fullness of our body change. Oh, our watchmen begin to cry out, press the battle, press the battle, don't turn around, press on into the promises of God. Oh, it's your land, it's your land, possess it, it's your peace, possess it. And then it's your joy, possess it, it's your Holy Ghost, possess it, it's yours, it's yours. Oh, that voice began to cry out, press the battle. They say that it's at that, in a marathon, it's right around that 20th mile where people are most likely to give up because they hit the wall. As they say, they hit that wall and they give up. They said, usually if they can just get far enough to see the finish line, then that alone will give them the strength to finish the race. And then the finish line is in sight. And then you come against that wall sometimes, that sound barrier, as brother Brandon taught us, between faith and unbelief. Oh, but if you just get a vision, oh, there's the finish line. And it brings a perseverance, press the battle. It's the last mile, Satan will try to, Satan will bring you to that last mile. God will let you get to that last mile sometimes to test your faith. Oh, but if you just look up, don't look to the left, don't look to the right, look to the finish line. A generation of perseverance. There they got to Cates Barnia as we begin to close this. And there had been a discussion between Almighty God and between Moses and Aaron saying, how long will these people provoke me? And he wanted to destroy them and slay them in that land, but Moses said, hold on. If you do that, then the Egyptians will begin to think that we couldn't do it and we couldn't make it. And they begin to think that, you know, they won. So Moses stood in the gap and said, alright, I'll pardon them, but they won't enter the land that I've ordained for that believer. But then the Bible would say, but Caleb was of another spirit. And because he was of another spirit, him and his seed after him would enter into that land. And when Caleb got to Cates Barnia, he didn't say, we were better off in Egypt, but he said, we are more than able to take the land. We are more than able to possess the promise. We are more than able in that Caleb's spirit and led him into every promise of God. You see, Satan will try to tell you, friends, Satan will try to tell you that because you get discouraged or because sometimes you hit some opposition in first, a small moment, you begin to doubt, Satan will try to whisper in your ear, see, you're mixed multitude. You're an unbeliever, you're a make believer. You know what, that parable of those that said that there would come some that God would say, depart from me, you workers of iniquity, I never knew you, that's you. You know, that's you because you doubted the promise and you hit a blockade. But brother Brandon taught us in that vision from Hebrews 6 of those two seed that would come, that would be those wheat and those tares. He said, there was one big difference between them is that they were of different seed. He said, those workers of iniquity, those were not backsliders, those were the seed of Satan. And it's important because there's gonna be times in your life where you actually have moments you might backslide. And the devil will try to tell you, well, see, I always told you, you were never gonna make it. I always told you, you were gonna turn back one of these days. Oh, but backsliding is not lost. And then brother Brandon said, Israel never lost their covenant, they just lost the blessing. And said, brother Brandon said, I'm trying to get the people to understand, you know, he taught them in Hebrews 3 that don't provoke God with your unbelief. He said, the reason these things are happening to you is testings, it's trials to prove your faith. He said, don't turn back, don't provoke God, these are things testing your faith. And sometimes you find yourself in that backsliding condition and you're ready to give up. Oh, but God begins to come along and say, don't give up, don't give up, don't back down. You are not, you are not an unbeliever, you've just gone through a struggle. He said, it's like that eagle that was caught in that cage. That's what it's like to be backslid. It doesn't change your seed. You're caught in the cage, but brother Brandon said, and then you're helpless unless someone would put forth his hand, open the cage. And God did that in calling you, he opened the cage to let you out. And then if God's calling you tonight, he's opening a cage to let you out of that condition to rise to the position you belong in. Like Peter and them said at that gate, silver and gold have I none, but such as I have, give I unto you. Rise up, take thy bed and walk. That's what we're saying tonight, rise up. It's time to rise up out of that paralyzed condition. Take up your bed and start walking in the promises of God. It's Cates Barnia, it's decision time. Choose you this day who you will serve, the God of the Amorites, the God on the other side of the flood. Or as for me and my house, Joshua said, we will serve the living God at Cates Barnia. Say, it's too hard, brother Isaac, it's too hard. I feel like I'm just ready to give up. But choose you this day. If he brought you this far, can't he take you all the way through? I like how brother Wayne says it, if you don't quit church, you're gonna make it. If you just don't quit, you're gonna make it. And then because interruption doesn't change the destination. Obstacles don't change the vision and if you just don't quit, you're gonna make it. If you just don't stop, you can possess every gate. Oh, Elijah said, why halt ye between two opinions? If Baal be God, serve him, but if God be God, then serve him. And brother Brandon said, the people answered him, not a one. But brother Brandon said, oh, but there was a 700 laying there who were still laying in those denominations, but they were gonna be called out and they would not bow knee to that Baal religion. How I would have liked to stand there on that day, brother Ani, when Elijah called out, if Baal be God, serve him, and if God be God, serve him. I say, I will serve the living God. I will believe in a God that can say to Congressman Upshaw, 66 years you laid in that condition, but rise up. It happened to you one day, didn't it, brother Paul? Oh, yeah. You're paralyzed, 66 years. I sat in this chair and I've wondered what it's like to really have an experience like my pastor has. 20 years I sat in this message, people, and I've wondered what it's like to to feel that anointing, to feel that liberty, to feel that joy, to feel that peace. I've wondered what it's like, Brother Isaac. I haven't moved very far. It's been five years and I just feel like I haven't made any ground. The spirits whisper in my ear and I just don't feel strong enough to stand up against them. But there is a God here. You don't have to halt between two opinions any longer. I believe He's here. Brother Brandon said about that Congressman Upshaw, "One day paralyzed, the next day healed." You see, it's been in a meeting like this where God would take healers of the faith, like Ron Spencer, Ronnie Long, Del Smith, and in a moment, walking under borderline religious spirits, walking in the world, drinking alcohol. And God comes down and says, "Son, great is thy faith. I know you've had many hindrances in your life, but rise up and walk." Amen, as the musicians come. Brother Brandon said, Brother Brandon said, "That your healing might not be five minutes from you, but unbelief would keep it from you for years. But faith takes that negative and makes it a positive." And I say, "Unbelief may have kept it from you for years, but your healing might be five minutes from you." At Kaddish, they weren't very far from that promised land. They were within walking distance. Five minutes from now, you might've spent your whole life living in a religious spirit. Five minutes from now, oh, that Holy Ghost could be falling on your life like never before. Five minutes from now, that prodigal could be walking through that back door. Five minutes from now, a fountain of peace might be flowing through your worried, nervous mind. Brother Brandon said, about that Kaddish Barnea, forgive me, I'm nowhere near where the quote is. Said, "If you wanna take a stand, you begin to pray over them, it's a time of decision. It's a time of decision, will you serve the living God or will you turn back?" If we could just make that to you tonight, maybe you've been sick, maybe you've been in a condition that, that you're not happy with and you'd like to stand to your feet tonight and say, "I put in my faith with the promise, amen, that I want a new vision." Maybe you come in here sick tonight and say, "Lord, give me a new vision. Lord, give me a new focus, Lord. Give me a new passion, Lord. Give me a new, give me a new attitude. Lord, that I don't have to bow down to that spirit, but that enemy which once ruled over me, I can rule over it." Amen, with every head bowed, every eye closed, if we could just, whatever need you have tonight, just begin to lift it before the Lord as we open this meeting. We've got many services coming. Man, we just wanna begin to get in the spirit. We just wanna begin to get in the spirit where all things are possible. Brother Brandon said how, you know, looking at this great book of promises, how it makes our heart to say, "Lord, I believe, help thou, my non-belief." Amen, tonight I'd like to ask you, will you be a Caleb and a Joshua in the books of God? Amen, will you, will you be a Moses that says, "I do not believe in a so-far religion. I do not believe in just joining a church, but I believe that I can possess my land." Are you gonna be a Caleb that says, "We're more than able to take it?" I believe you are. I don't believe you come this far just to turn back. I believe I'm speaking to sons and daughters of God tonight. And I'd like to say to you, keep pressing, keep pressing. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for your presence which has dropped down into this place. We thank you for your presence, Lord. I may have scattered things in my humanity, but Father, I believe you're calling to some hearts, saying, you don't have, you've come to maybe a why in the road. The devil's trying to tell you, "There's only one way, but I'm here to tell you, there's another way." The devil's trying to tell you that it's not possible, just give up, it's not for you. There's only gonna be a few make that rapture, it's never gonna be you. I'm here to tell you, that's a lie from the devil. Amen, if there's a deep calling to the deep in your heart, there's a deep to respond. And if that deep's calling, it shows that there's more for you. It shows that there's more land to possess. Father, I pray you lead your children this weekend, Father. Maybe some of them are in different stages, no doubt. Maybe some of them have come to their Kaddish Barnea. Lord, and at that time of decision, Lord, maybe the young people, they come to that stage, many of them right at that time of life. Satan trying to lead them one way, but your word begin to beckon them another way, saying, "There's nothing for you in that world. There's nothing for you out in that, that world. There's nothing for you in that world of sin, there's nothing for you out there." God's beckoning you to a real experience on the sacred sands, beckoning you to higher heights, saying, "You can cross over. You can have it, it's yours. I've given it to you by promise. Amen, I've already told you, you could have it. I've already told you. Amen, why, why do you provoke me? I've already let you know that you're more than able to make it." Father, if there's a discouraged heart here tonight, Lord, they've got in a rut, Lord. The devil will try to tell them, "Father, that, that Lord, that, that, that Lord, that they can't have it, Father." Just discouragement, heaviness, that dark spirit that likes to come around and whisper, saying, "You're never gonna break out of this. You might as well take your life because it's not gonna get any better. You might as well take your life because I'm here to tell you, it's, this cycle keeps coming back, it's not gonna get any better. Why would you keep trying?" Oh, that's a lie from the devil. But friends, if you just keep walking, the train's almost past. If you just keep walking, that last rail car's about to pass. And you can have back your joy, you can have back your worship. Oh, that old heavy feeling that you felt for years, that's not who you are. You're not the child of that, you're a child of God. And it's not here to stay. Brother Brandon said, "The sun might hide its face, but it can't hide Him." The sun might hide the sun, but it's still shining behind the clouds. And I believe we can experience some cloud breaking this weekend. That enemy which once ruled over you, Father, I pray there'd be a change of rulership this weekend. I pray in the services to come, Lord, that chains would be broken. Young people and elders alike would receive the Holy Ghost. Lord, healing would come to hearts, refreshing, refilling, Father. We just wanna see your children in victory, Lord. We just wanna see your children free, Father. Granted now, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen and amen. Amen, as the brother sings. Amen, God bless you saints.
I've found joy, peace, grace, and favor. Oh, I've been changed.
If you'd like to stand and worship Him tonight. Oh, just begin to praise Him. Oh, that's right, change that confession.
Delivered.
All right now, I've been changed.
I've found joy, peace, grace, and favor. And right now is the moment. Today is the day. I've been changed, I've been changed. And I'm waiting, yes, I'm waiting for this moment to come. And I won't let it pass me by. I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence came and changed me. Oh, I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence came and changed me. Oh, give it and no more change. Oh, fear my path, it's over. And right now is the moment. Today is the day. I've been changed, I've been changed. And I'm waiting, yes, I'm waiting for this moment to come. And I won't let it pass me by. No, I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence came and changed me. Oh, I won't go back and go back to the way it used to be before your presence came. I've been changed, yes. Oh, I've been changed. Aren't you glad I'm here? We're free, delivered. Oh, I've found joy, peace, amazing, and favor. Yes, I've been changed, yeah. I'm free, delivered. Oh, I've found joy, peace, amazing grace, and favor. And right now is my moment. Today is your day. I've been changed, I've been changed. And I'm waiting, yes, I'm waiting for this moment to come. And I won't let it pass me by. Oh, I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence came and changed me. I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence.
We're gonna sing it a cappella this evening.
No, I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence came and changed me. I won't go back, I can't go back to the way it used to be before your presence came and changed me.
Let's go to Keith, Brother Jesus, hallelujah.
Well, you unravel me with a melody. You surround me with a song of deliverance from my enemies till all my fears are gone. I'm no longer a slave to fear. I am a child of God. I'm no longer a slave to fear. I am a child of God. From my mother's womb, you have chosen me. Yes, I've been born again into your family. Your blood flows through my veins. I'm no longer a slave to fear. I am a child of God. I'm no longer...
A second verse, man.
I am a child of God. From my mother's womb, you have chosen me. Your love just called my name. And I've been born again into your family. Your blood flows through these veins. And I'm no longer a slave to fear. I am a child of God. I'm no longer a slave to fear. I am a child of God.
Turn to your neighbor, tell him I'm a child of God, hallelujah. Praise the Lord.
Oh, Father of life, seated on your throne of grace, it's only by your mercy... It's only by your mercy we are saved. And Lord, you have said, if we'll call upon your name. We and our friends would be saved. So we cry out your name. El Shaddai, heart of God. Lord most high. We rely on your grace. Lord most high. Jesus Christ. Father of love. You're never failing to forgive. Each moment is a gift from you to live. But we're only here to tell this world about your grace. Until the day you'll take us all away. So we cry out your name. El Shaddai, heart of grace. Lord most high. We rely on your grace.
Hallelujah. Can we cry out the Lord's name this evening? Praise the Lord. Let's go to Esis if you would. I just like what he said. If you could just touch the hem of his garment. Lord, let it be me. I know there's a lot of people here, but let it be me, Lord. Let me touch the hem of your garment. Hallelujah. Let's start off with that chorus. If I could but touch the hem of his garment. If I could just touch some part of his clothes. I know I'd be here and my sins all forgiven. If I could just touch him, I know I'd be home. A woman one day had many physicians. Her troubles grew worse. In the Bible it told. Then she heard. She came to Jesus. She found what she needed, both body and soul. If I could just touch the hem of his garment. If I could just touch some part of his clothes. I know I'd be here and my sins all forgiven. If I could just touch him, I know I'd be home. Blind Bart made a sale. By the wayside begging. Nobody to help him. Now life's where he went. Then Jesus passed by. And he heard his sad crying. He reached down his hand and he healed him that day. If I could just touch the hem of. If I could just touch some part of his clothes. I know I'd be here and my sins all forgiven. If I could just touch him, I know I'd be home. It could be miscue. To Jesus by night. His eyes were so blinded to the things that were wrong. He could not understand how a man when he's old. Who did for a God's will have life for his soul. If I could just touch the hem of his garment. If I could just touch some part of his clothes. I know I'd be here and my sins all forgiven. If I could just touch him, I know I'd be home. But one day as I sat by the wayside begging. Nobody to help me. Now life's where he went. Then Jesus came by. And he heard my sad crying. But he reached down his hand and he saved me that day. If I could just touch the hem of his garment. If I could just touch some part of his clothes. I know I'd be here and my sins all forgiven. If I could just touch him, I know I'd be home. Oh, glory to God. Hallelujah. You know, the Lord never disappoints. He always produces. Man, how many's been touched tonight? How many can say, "Thank you, Lord Jesus"? Let's give the Lord a great big hand clap of praise. He's so good to us. So good. My goodness. Wow, if we came and we had any kind of pity party on ourself. Man, that sure, that sure is over. Man, that spanked me. Said, "Hey, stop your crying, speak." Amen. So, how many appreciate our brother, brother Isaac? Brother, God bless you. That was phenomenal. Amen. That was the word of the day, phenomenal. And God came down and that was phenomenal. Amen. How many can say, "I'm going all the way"? "I'm not laying down in the middle of the road". You know what? If I was a little weary, that was just the boost that I needed tonight. How many got boosted tonight? Amen. That was like a shot of nitro right there, man. Praise God. You love the Lord this evening? Amen. We just, we're grateful that God has the best for us. I believe that that was just what we needed. And if he could have given us any better, he would have. That was exactly what we all need. God, God bless you. I know that the sisters have provided food for you this evening. There's gonna be food for you tomorrow evening, more food and more food. And you know what? Just eat and be merry. Eat and be merry. When that prodigal son came home. Killed a fatted calf. And eat and be merry. Are you happy tonight? I pray the Lord richly bless you. We'll just sing that song, just that he adds up there of that same spirit. And we will dismiss this evening and we'll, we'll eat, we'll be merry, we'll fellowship. And we'll be in prayer for this evening. And brother Gilbert's gonna come up and pray for the food this evening.
I don't need a microphone. Come on.
Okay.
That's power of heart. Heavenly Father, Lord. You came down in a mighty way this evening, Lord, and just spoke to me, Lord Father. Thanks for that, Lord Father. You're worthy of my praise, Lord Father. And let me just continue to look at you throughout the night, Lord Father. To you and for you and from you, Lord Father. And let me do what you would have me do, Lord Father. And Lord, as we go forth this evening, Lord Father, a meal's been prepared by the ladies of the, of our little church, Lord Father. But Lord, you've given us all this substance, Lord Father. And we thank you for it and ask, Lord Father, we ask that you bless it for the nourishment of our bodies. And we give you praise. Amen.
Hallelujah. How many can say amen to that this evening? You know, our brother was speaking just a little bit on, on certain things and he was, he was talking a little bit about age. And it might be controversial to some, but not to me. But I believe we're living in a bright age. How many, how many here believe that we're living in a bright age? Well, I'm gonna leave you with these words tonight. Then act your age. Let's sing it now, brother.
Oh, this world is not my home. I'm just a passing through. My treasures are laid up somewhere beyond the blue. The angels beckon me from heaven's open door. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. Oh, Lord, you know, I have no friend like you. If heaven's not my home, then Lord, what will I do? The angels beckon me from heaven's open door. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. They're all expecting me. Well, that's one thing I know. I fixed it up with Jesus many years ago. I know you'll see me through. Oh, I am wicked. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. Oh, Lord, you know, I have no friend like you. If heaven's not my home, Lord, what will I do? The angels beckon me from heaven's open door. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. Just over in the glory and we'll live eternity.
The saints on every hand, what are they shouting? Songs as sweet as praise are back from heaven. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. We're gonna hold that up there. You, you wanna know? What did, what did you hear when they were shouting victory, brother? We're shouting victory. The songs as sweet as praise. We're gonna try that one more again. And we're gonna give it our best victory. If you, you have a victory, and if you have a victory in Jesus, well, praise the Lord. Amen. So we're gonna try that one more time. Just over in the glory and we'll live eternity. Oh, are you ready, brother? What are we shouting? The songs as sweet as praise are back from heaven. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. Oh, Lord. God bless you, church. You're dismissed this evening. They have food for you in the back. God bless you. Angels beckon me from heaven's open door. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. This world is not my home. Just a passing through. Treasures are laid up somewhere beyond the blue. The angels beckon me from heaven's open door. No, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. Oh, Lord, you know. If heaven's not my home, then Lord, what will I do? The angels beckon me from heaven's open door. Oh, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. They're all expecting me. That's one thing I know. I fixed it up with Jesus many years ago. Oh, I can't in this world anymore. Oh, Lord, you know, I have no friend like you. If heaven's not my home, Lord, what will I do? The angels beckon me from heaven's open door. No, I can't feel at home in this world anymore. Over in the.